Welcome, everyone, to the June 24 City Council work session, not work session, City Council meeting. Thank, welcome to everyone here and at home. The first item that we have on our agenda each Council meeting is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have, for the public forum, we have four people signed up. The first person up is, I don't know if I actually did I hit that?
Yes.
Okay. First person up is Kit Teng Trongjita, followed by A.P. Bell.
Good evening, Mayor PSC and ladies and gentlemen of the Council.
Speak right up.
Thank you. And I'm here to talk about my project on Flankin Boulevard for my business, which I own Cart de Frisco, that I've been operating the business for the last 32 years in our community. And two years ago, I bought a piece of property from Peace Health on Flankin Boulevard across from Phoenix Inn. And I have been wanted to, you know, build a home base for my business over there. And so, we started on the project, and then I have a call from City of Eugene, see if we can accommodate the historical building that need to be moved from the property behind, on Eighth and Ferry, behind the federal courthouse, and see whether I can incorporate that into my project. So, I kind of liked the idea, so I went to Historical Society, study on the history of the building and this and that, and Historical Society excited about what can happen to the building. So, they kind of ballparked, you know, he urged me to go in front of the board to present my project and what I'm going to do to the building. We're going to make them to a pub and kind of tie it in with my project. So, they endorsed, you know, my scheme. The problem is that we, when we have the building, we have to have parking for the building, which I was told that the kind of, that the council had voted on the core, campus core, core campus building, that may put my project into jeopardy, that, and also was told that the City Council did not know anything about my project that I have been working on for the last four months. And with Ken Nagal, the architect in town, Ken Nagal kind of found out today as well about the meeting and this and that, I was urged to come in front of the City Council to talk about this, to let the City Council know that, don't forget about me, I have something going as well, and if the council may know about this, that the council vote may be different. So, anyway, I just here just to say that I have something that I think is great for the community. You know, we have the 32 years business that's going to be on Flankin Boulevard. We're going to, Oregon Lock Home, going to build us a lock shelter, you know, we're going to be an outdoor indoor kind of things, and then also able to accommodate Historical Society's building, you know, so I have coffee about this to give to the council.
Okay. Next up is A.P. Bell, it looks like. Is that correct? Am I not saying the name right? Doesn't that look like A.P. Bell to you?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. I don't, yeah? I don't see A.P. Bell. Okay, Jennifer Frenzer is next, followed by David Butcher.
Come on down. You're such a media child, my God.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Frenzer, and I'm part of Betty Taylor's ward. I have two topics to discuss with you this evening. The first one concerns bees, our pollinators. I want to thank council and the city for the changes that restrict certain pesticides that do kill bees, particularly when people misuse them. And those are called neonicotidoids. It's kind of a crazy word, but that's, there are several types of neonicotidoids, and there are several ingredients in retail products that are impacting our urban bee populations. And this is huge. This is a very monumental problem. And so, the city is not using those, but I would like to encourage the city to go one step further and educate the public about not purchasing those products that have neonicotidoids in their ingredients list, and encouraging the retailers here to not be selling them or to mark them properly as not bee safe, because the impact on all of us and the whole valley in terms of being able to have viable agriculture and just viable gardens is severe. In Italy and other places in Europe, this chemical has, these chemicals have been banned, and the bee populations have rebounded and colony collapse has reduced dramatically. So, the impact is very clear. And while in America, a lot of the companies and company-founded, funded scientists will say that it's a complex issue, really, it's very remarkable what just changing the use of this class of chemicals, this class of pesticides can do. So, I encourage you all to, I guess, start a campaign of educating the public about the impact of those chemicals. Also, I just wanted to check in and make sure that the, a topic that was brought up in a previous meeting about, totally different issue, but this is a topic of a young woman who was searched by a police officer. She was a minor, and she was searched by a male police officer, and she was unaware that she had the option of being searched by a female police officer. What kind of policy changes have started to make sure that minors are absolutely aware of that?
Thank you. Next is David Butcher.
Hi, my name is David. I'm here to talk about homeless camping in undeveloped parks. I live by Ferndale Park, and we really, a lot of the neighbors, we really don't want that. I thought there was going to be several here tonight, but I don't know what happened. Back when I worked for the city of Eugene, I worked with the police in homeless camps and things like that, and even if there's facilities, there's, they're not used. We've already been finding needles and things like that in the park, and I know for a fact from doing the work that that, we saw what happened under Washington-Jersey Street Bridge, and we really do not want that. Our property values will plummet. We can't even, from the city right now, get them to come mow the weeds in the park. They'll mow the grass, but they're avoiding the weeds. So, we really are against having that. We really don't understand why we've been targeted, 16 parks, why we've been targeted. I don't really see anything in the Ferry Street Bridge area named, so kind of tells you something right there. But we're really against it. We're going to have a petition. We're going to get it signed by a lot of people, so we just wish you would take Ferndale Park off of that list. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public forum, and thank you for coming to talk about Ferndale Park and bees and AgriPac site and all of the things that you came to talk about. Thanks very much. George, I mean, Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I just found out about Mr. Tom Trongjita's proposal for the site, the parking lot site that we've directed the city manager to sell or lease to Core Campus. Evidently, he presented an offer to the city to purchase the site and to move the historic AgriPac building there, and he's been endorsed by the Historical Society as a, and he would use the building as a location for a restaurant in his Cart de Frisco, much-loved local restaurant. And then he would have an, build an outdoor area too, in good weather, and have his cart out there. And I believe that that would be a much higher use of the site than a parking lot. A very well-known, beloved institution in Eugene, and so I think council needs to seriously consider, to reconsider the direction to the city manager and make that a little more I just think that, you know, there's really no question that it would be a much more beneficial use of the site, plus it would generate more tax money for the city than on a parking lot. That's like the lowest form of property tax the city can receive, maybe make it a much more interesting streetscape. So, we need to think about that. I may introduce a motion shortly to consider that very thing. Thank you.
And I've got Counselors Saret, Clark, and Taylor in the queue, but I'm going to ask the city manager to comment at this point.
I can, and I think Sarah Manderick could comment more, and we'll get you more information we need to. But we also think it would be a good use of that site, and been working with the gentleman to accommodate both uses, and believe we have an opportunity to both of those, and have indicated that we would be coming back to the council, or would need to come back to the council to move that forward. So, I don't know, Sarah, if you want to elaborate on that.
That pretty much sums it up. I think for us, best outcome is it all works together. We would also like to see the AgriPac site work there, as he suggested. We received the site plan today, so we're just starting to work with Core on how their site and parking lot layout may detail out and what their actual needs are, and so our hope is that those things work together.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's a little surprise. Move to Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been eating Cart de Frisco.
I had to.
That's fine.
Okay. Go ahead. The Counselors Saret after him.
Okay, thanks.
Just, I get it out of order, sorry. Go ahead.
My turn now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. Yeah, I think I'm ready now.
Go.
No pressure. I've been eating Cart de Frisco for over 25 years. It's a local institution. I'm kind of, I didn't know about that either until after we'd voted on that. I didn't even know there was a proposal there. I was kind of surprised when that happened, that through the process of evaluating that sale, that at least that level of interest wasn't brought forward for our consideration or the potential impact. And at some point later, I'd really love to know why, but I'm hopeful too that there's an opportunity for both to succeed there.
And I, and we can provide you more information. And again, I think our hope has been all along that they both can succeed on that particular site, and so that's the outcome we have been working towards. And as I recall, the entire portion of that site was not made available or offered to Core, knowing that there's other uses that also might be used for that, and so we can provide additional information. But again, our best outcome is for both of them to work in conjunction on that site.
It was presented to us, to me, after our vote, by a member of the public, that there was the potential for, not conflict, that's not the right word, but that there may be not quite agreement on all those details that may have borne on our decision. And so, I was just wondering why staff just didn't bring that forward as a part of the decision-making.
And we can get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Saret.
Thank you. Thanks, folks, for coming down to speak with us. I appreciate Jennifer Frenzer reminding us about the police policy around opposite-sex searches, and as one of the two counselors on the Police Commission, I will definitely take that up as a topic at the Police Commission level and see if we can look at that policy. I also want to thank David Butcher from, who lives near Ferndale. I've been getting a lot of emails from folks near Ferndale Park, and I had encouraged you all to come and speak to the council and/or send emails, so I appreciate you doing that. Hopefully, you won't need to take up a petition, but, you know, can always get ready for that kind of action if you feel the need. We are continuing that conversation. I think it'll be some time before we take any definitive action around the homeless issue and whether or not folks can sleep in the parks, and so please stay tuned and stay involved and keep letting us know what you think of those ideas. Thank you.
I would only add to that, that it's on our Wednesday, noon council agenda, so you may want to tune in to that. Okay. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you who came, and we should do something about preserving the health of bees, because it's closely related to health of human beings, as well as bees and everything else. But I, to was very disappointed that we weren't told about the Cart de Frisco application, which is a local business, which I think we all value and which we should value in preference to an out-of-state business or any, a local business for many years that we all value, I think, and combined historical preservation, which is another important issue. So, I think that this should definitely come before a parking lot for another project, and I hope that we will see that it does. And thanks to the owner for coming tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all of the folks who came out to speak tonight. And I'd like to change the tone a little bit. I've been approached by the leadership of LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens, who recently established the first chapter of LULAC in Oregon in the Eugene-Springfield area. And I would like to move that this council direct the city manager to prepare a proclamation recognizing and honoring LULAC's presence in our community and the value that LULAC brings to our community.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition?
I just wanted to say something. I don't know why we would, can I say something even though you already voted? I don't know why we would recognize, why we would make a resolution supporting one organization when there are many, many organizations that might like such a resolution. I just didn't quite see the point.
So, we're going to finish the vote, and I'll explain the difference. So, are you a yes or no?
I guess I'll be a yes.
Okay. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. So, this is the, I think we just hadn't talked clearly with, to Counselor Evans. Essentially, what he brought forward is a proclamation, and so it's, I suggested that he just send it our way to be made into a proclamation, like many. We acknowledge different entities all the time and their good works, and this is certainly one of them. So, it's, it would be part of many, many, many that we've done as a, as a community and be glad to do that. So, thank you. All right. So, now we're going to move on. Oh, city manager, I just wanted to say one thing, and I, with great respect for everybody, now I just think this sort of falls into the no surprises category, and we've had, we've had a couple of those lately, and so I want to raise the flag of, one of the things we try to do for each other is, is no surprises, so just.
I heard that clearly. Thank you.
All right. Consent calendar. Council President.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue here. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition, so it is, consent calendar is adopted. Now, we're going on to item number three, which is public hearing and action, a resolution electing to receive state revenue sharing funds. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is part of our city budget, public hearing and action. And this public hearing is to provide council an opportunity to hear from the public on the FY14 proposed budget, as considered by the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee recommended a budget that restores 5.3 million in services and that they meet six times before the end of the calendar year to find long-term solutions for the general fund, and council is asked to take action tonight.
So, I'm going to open the hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a completed request to speak form, the information just prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I have two people signed up. The first one is Ann Erlich O'Brien, and the second one is Gina Metcalf.
I'm here representing Church Women United of Lane County, and this is because we are, we have a special interest in peace and justice and caring in our community, and we just simply want to say that we ask, okay, we implore, that you all vote in favor of the Budget Committee's recommendation to continue the funding at the current level for these services, and we see this as a stopgap, so we also would like to encourage you, implore you, to continue looking at alternative and additional funding, because these services benefit the entire community, and it is the right thing to do. That's it. Thank you.
Gina Metcalf is next.
I'm with Team Eugene, and I know that, you know, with the budget meeting, we're deciding how much is to be used.
Did you give your name and?
Oh, Gina Metcalf.
Okay.
And, you know, how much money is to be used for the budget as far as our swimming program. And I'm kind of asking today, you know, about the pool, you know, supporting the pool. My daughter's been swimming since she was three years old, and she moved a team quite a few years ago, and even during the time that the recession hit and we lost our home, we couldn't afford to pay for swimming. And we were in that month of not having a place to live, and I went to Scott and asked him, you know, about her swimming, what are we going to do? Because we knew we didn't have the money. And they supported my daughter, and she succeeds in school, she succeeds in her swimming, and it's something that she really loves. And without the pools, she would have been lost. She would have been one of those kids that got lost in the crowd. And, you know, so I'm very, very appreciative of having a pool for my child and other children, and that we have a team that supports kids, not just the rich and the wealthy kids, but the kids that are struggling and pulling them in, giving them a home and a family. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and say thank you for coming. I guess I just want to make one comment, and that is, to be really clear, I think Ann did a good job, but I just want to be really clear, that we're not in any better situation than we were before, that the same gap still exists, and we are plugging it with one-time funds for this year, and then we'll be trudging through some difficult budget decisions. So, it's good that you're all here. I thank you for coming, but we still will be facing the next budget, as we look at the next budget, the same, the same issue is still there, and so we will be asking you to get engaged with us as we go through the budget process to try to figure out what we can do and how we're going to get through it. So, that's, I just wanted to be clear, we didn't find any pots anywhere. It's still the same, it's still the same situation we were in before. So, I'm going to ask council if they have any, anybody has any comments? If not, I'm going to ask you, do you, is any counselor, yes, Counselor Brown?
I have a question.
Sure.
We're voting on Resolution 5088, 5089, and 5090?
Uh huh.
Okay. Number three. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
As soon as there's a motion.
And, and the question before you right now, I'm looking at all of you, is, does anybody object to taking action tonight? I see no one objecting, so council president.
I move to adopt Resolution 5088, electing to receive state revenue sharing funds pursuant to Section 221.770 of Oregon Revised Statutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Zalinka.
Yeah, just underscore what the mayor said, that we didn't find any pots of money anywhere, and some people say yet, but I'm not confident that we will find any pots of money. We're going to be pretty much in the same circumstances we were, found ourselves in earlier this year, and not only did we not make any of the cuts this year, we actually made the hole a little deeper. So, we're actually, we can't keep doing this. It's just completely unsustainable to do what we've done this year, which is to punt for a year and have a conversation. I fully support going out and talking to the community about this and looking at all these different issues over the next couple of months through the budget planning process that we're going to embark on, and would love to hear from people's ideas about where we can find some more revenue or where we can make cuts that don't impact services. But all those efficiencies and changes that we've been doing over the last couple of years were all done kind of to avoid having the painful cuts of looking at cutting services to the public. And once we've, and so they were kind of behind the screen. And when we announced to the community that we had made $24 million of cuts over the last three years, they said, what cuts? We didn't see anything. And I think that kind of hurt the ability to have that message get across, that we now need to look for reductions in services. So, I hope people will participate in that process. I think the council is very open and willing to listen to it, but I'm not real confident that we're going to find a way out of it, other than making some substantial cuts come this time next year.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. This isn't the perfect budget decision, but with a choice, with a series of bad choices, this is the least bad choice amongst them, and I'm hopeful that we will have an opportunity to work out more creative solutions over the course of the next six months. I think this is the best of a couple of bad options, and it was the best choice available to us.
All those in favor, please indicate. Four, five, six, seven, eight. In favor and none in opposition, it passes. Council President.
I move to adopt Resolution 5089, certifying that the city of Eugene provides municipal services required by Oregon Revised Statutes, Section 221.760.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no one in the queue. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Council President.
I move to adopt Resolution 5090, adopting the budget, making appropriations, determining levying, and categorizing the annual ad valorem property tax levy for the city of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Zalinka.
So, I have a yes on this, because I perceive this as a procedural vote, and not that I support the path that we've gone on, because I think I've already stated my reasons for that.
Okay. All right. Counselor Pauling.
I'm voting no on this, and it's not because of any one program's better than the other. I think a lot of the programs that we do are very important. Some of the programs that were identified in the levy, you know, are vital to our community's existence. The reason why I'm voting no on this is because I am adamantly opposed to using one-time monies for ongoing services. I think it's fiscally irresponsible for us to pass a budget where we continually do that, and we've been doing that year after year after year. And one of the questions that I hope that we address here in the next And one of the questions that I hope that we address here in the next six months is, what next? Okay? We've given Organization A additional one-time monies for ongoing services for this year. What are you going to do, Organization A, next year when we don't have that money? It's not up to the City of Eugene to continually give one-time monies for ongoing services. The organizations that we help fund and the projects within the city government that we help fund have to start making some critical decisions to look at their own budgets. It's not always up to the city to come up with that additional money. And like councillor Zalinka said, we're going to be worse off at the end of this next fiscal year than we are right now. And this next six-month process that we're going to be having with the Budget Committee going over this is going to entail some public outreach and some public input, and we hope to hear from folks on that. So again, I'm voting no, and it's not because of any one project is better than the next.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposition, one. It passes. Thank you. Now we're to item number four on our agenda, resolution adopting a supplemental budget. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is to provide council an opportunity to hear from the public on an FY13 supplemental budget. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenue and authorizes other unanticipated changes in legal appropriations, and council is asked to take action on this item tonight, and the specific items are in your packet.
I'm going to open the hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a completed request-to-speak form to the Informational Desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I have four people in the queue. First up is a familiar one, John Borowski, followed by Allison Knight.
Good evening. John Borowski, Eugene Ward Three. Madam Mayor, council president, city councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the supplemental budget. As you know, I'm almost always here for the supplemental budgets. I'm surprised there's four other people behind me. That's very encouraging. And I just like to talk to bring light, because a lot of times the supplemental budgets don't get the light shined on them that the main budget does, and sometimes there's some significant expenditures in there that need some light shined on. So I'm just going to share a little anecdote. I'm going to be remodeling my kitchen this year. And yes, planning and development, I will be pulling all the correct permits and paying the fees. And when we decided to do this, my wife and I looked at the kitchen, looked at our finances, and looked at what our budgets were. And we decided that, yes, this was the year of the kitchen. And we decided that we had some money that we had saved up, we had some money that was available to us in a line of credit, and we figured out what our budget was for our kitchen. And then we went forward and hired a designer and a builder. The city is kind of in that same situation with City Hall, and it's represented in this supplemental budget. There's an appropriation for $750,000 for the design feature. Well, I just wrote my check for my design feature on my kitchen, but I know where my money's coming from for the build part of that. Part of it's coming from my savings, which the city has been very good about doing. The other part of my kitchen is I'm going to be borrowing it. I'm going up against my home equity line of credit, and that is also an appropriate way possibly to build a City Hall. But to this point, I haven't heard where the second half of the city's money is coming from, and yet we're writing the check for the design side. Now, I understand that a design port part can sit on the shelf for a while until the money comes in, but it seems to me that as a citizen, if there is some sort of idea where that second $7 million is going to come from, it sure would be nice to know so that we have no surprises, as I heard earlier in the thing. So just know that if you're authorizing this supplemental budget, you are authorizing $750,000 from the general fund, a sub-fund out of the general fund, to go to the City Hall project, which in my opinion is worthy. I think we do need to do City Hall, and I think that it's the appropriate part, but I still would like to know where the extra 700 or 7 million might be coming from. So that's it. Thank you.
Allison Knight is next, followed by Max Diaz.
I think the three of us signed up to speak next actually made a mistake, and we're thinking we wanted to be heard on the public funds for, that we just, that you just voted on, but if we could be heard still, that would be great.
You just have to speak to this one if it, that's, you can't speak to something else. You can only speak to this particular-
The supplemental budget.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So sorry.
Thank you.
Max Diaz-
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thanks for coming. Sorry that you got mixed up. But we'd be glad to receive it from you, okay?
Yeah.
Max Diaz is next.
The next two are the same.
Okay, next two? Okay, so just send it to us, okay? Yes.
Well, and also, the budget discussions going forward will have opportunity for public participation, so hopefully you'll be involved in those as well.
Let me-
Good idea.
Let me close the hearing and then ask you for comments. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I've done this a couple of times before I wasn't, before I was on council. I know what it is to gear up and get ready to come and speak and say something and give your input. And I really appreciate that you guys came out. I'm sorry the mix-up on which one to sign up for, but we really want to hear what you have to say. Like, so like the mayor said, I really hope you'll send that to us. The law says you have to do it in a very specific way, but we really appreciate you guys preparing and coming and trying to give us your input. It's really cool.
And we want it.
And we want it. And we're going to go through, as you said, another six-month process of trying to figure out long-term some better answers, and we could use your help.
Okay, councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got some questions about the proposal to, the one that Mr. Borowski spoke to, to reduce the facilities replacement fund by $750,000 and put it in the City Hall Replacement Fund to pay for architectural studies. I agree with his assessment. I mean, I, this is a significant amount of money. It's about 14% of the total cuts that were proposed in the manager's original budget. And we haven't had any discussion of this idea at council. We haven't had any discussion of this idea at Budget Committee. And I'm happy to approve the rest of the supplemental budget, but I think we ought to pull this out for more discussion and add it later. So my first question is, when is the last day that we can legally adopt a supplemental budget?
Wednesday would probably be the latest date that you could do that.
This Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
No, any time before July, July 31st.
Well-
I mean, June, June-
30th.
30th.
We'd have to re--
Because the new fiscal year starts July 1st. Okay. All right. So this is a sub-fund of the general fund?
Yes.
And so most of the source of the funding for the facility services comes out of the general fund?
Well, as you were calling maybe-
Other grants and-
Let me ask Sue to come speak to the history of where those funds come from. It's been various sources over a number of years.
So the facility reserve is held in the Facilities Services Fund, which is an internal service fund, so it's not part of the general fund.
Wait, what is the source of the funds for the facilities reserve?
There are a number of sources. I sent a pretty detailed memo to the Budget Committee earlier this year, but the funding came from settlement from lawsuit, some one-time funding from eWeb, unanticipated eWeb Silt revenues. I have to remember all the different funding sources, but there are a number of them that have occurred over the past 12 or 13 years.
I see. Well, and they'll leave approximately $20 million in the fund if this, once this money's withdrawn.
No.
Did I read the budget document correctly?
No. There, there's, we would anticipate that after the $750,000 is appropriated, there would be about $7.9 million that we would anticipate in FY14 that would be available in the facility reserve.
Once this is taken out?
Correct.
I see. Yeah, I think it's premature. I mean, we haven't really discussed next steps for City Hall. And, no, not concretely, we have no idea where half the funding's going to come from. There's $7.5 million or $8 million. We have no idea where it's going to come from just to build the initial ceremonial phase. Or have manager and staff identified, or other council members identified where that $7.5 million is going to come from? Have we identified any source for, to finish the project off?
I don't know, Sue, if you wanted to talk some to that, or?
Yeah, we, we've had some conversations about that, and we've talked about other potential funding sources. To the extent that there are eligible projects that would meet the telecom requirements, we can use telecom funds for a portion of the funding. We've also talked about, and actually did on supplemental budget one this year, appropriate a portion of the general capital transfer that comes from marginal beginning working capital. So you know how we transfer $900,000 to our general capital fund every year if we have that from carryover balance from the prior year? And we would dedicate a portion of that to City Hall rebuild, because for the past 10 or more years, we haven't really put any money into City Hall. So we've talked about that, and then other, identifying other one-time sources. If we were to sell assets, for instance, we could dedicate those funds to City Hall rebuild. And we would continue to look for grant opportunities and that sort of thing.
Is there any timeframe estimate of how long it was going to take to assemble the $7.5 to $8 million?
We haven't done a, I mean, the council hasn't had the conversation about exactly how that would occur, but we would-
What we've also said with the city council is, the goal is to complete the project by 2015.
Mm-hmm.
Summer, fall, winter of 2015. I have to go back and know specifically what that is. You might remember, we have had several conversations about City Hall over the last year or two. In February, we also identified that we'd be coming back with this particular supplemental appropriation for this particular purpose. Council said yes, and so we're responding back to council's direction. We also, a couple of weeks ago, came back for a work session to get additional clarification from the council on moving forward with City Hall and this request. And there was no additional clarification at that time, and so we're just continuing to respond to council's previous policy direction to us to come back and fund this next stage of City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Did you say that the funding will be identified by 2015? Or-
The project, we've said that the project, the goal of the project is to finish the project by 2015. And I don't recall exactly which season of 2015, but we've said it, 2015.
That's pretty ambitious when you haven't identified. Well, I've got the sense that nobody will support a motion to remove this, this section of the supplemental budget. I will vote against the supplemental budget. I think this is improper transfer of funds for a project that is still really way up in the air. And I have a feeling it might make it harder to ever pass any kind of a bond measure to finance future City Hall construction beyond the ceremonial centers, so I will not be supporting that supplemental budget.
Councillor polling.
Well, I was going to respond to councillor Brown's comments about not having discussed this, but the city manager has pretty well outlined all the discussions and meetings and votes and directions that we've taken, and even some that I've forgotten about, so I appreciate that. But what we're looking at is just the very starting point of getting funds to build a City Hall that's not ceremonial in nature as being described. We don't have a City Hall right now. We have nowhere other than the county courthouse and shared offices to conduct our business. The overall goal and design, from my understanding of the numerous conversations that we've had about the City Hall, that it will be constructed to start out in phases. And the first phase is going to be like a council chambers and the city manager's office and that type of thing. But it's going to be built in such a way that at future dates, we will be able to add on, and I'm not saying in 2017 or 2018, but it's going to be constructed in such a way that we will be able to add on at a later time. And we have had some 30,000-foot discussions about where the additional funding is going to come from, and it's well-known by the public as part of the testimony during our Budget Committee from the members of the swim club and everybody else that came forward asking for additional monies, saying that if, you know, if you help us here, we'll help you pass the bond measure. Now, to me, that indicates that not just the eight councillors and the mayor know about this, but the public is getting educated on it also. So the, expending the $750,000 from the Facility Reserve Fund for the purpose of the beginning of the design phase, I think is an appropriate use of that money.
Councillor Taylor.
Okay, it's, we've, in my opinion, we've delayed way too long to get started. But I think it's true, I've asked, and I think it's true, that once we have a plan, we can apply for grants. And this is a historic structure. It has historic significance. And I think, isn't it true that we can't apply for grants until we have a plan? Is that true?
That's generally true, and of course, we will be, and you've mentioned before, if there's grants available, we'd want to pursue any of those. And so given a design that the council eventually approves, if there's opportunities for grants, we would want to apply for those as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I, as a procedural matter, I'm going to vote no on this, but I feel comfortable that I've discussed my view on the matter enough.
Thank you, councillor Clark.
I guess I need to put a motion.
Uh-huh. I just, I will make one comment, and that is, as we sit in this building and do the business of the city, and all of you come to talk to us about extremely important topics to you, about your lives and your city, I don't think any of us would say that all the business we do here is ceremonial. Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution 5091, adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the City of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition, one, two, three. It passes. Thank you. Now I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And we have a public hearing in action on the, on the same, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene adopting the budget. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is to provide the Urban Renewal Agency Board an opportunity to hear from the public on the FY14 proposed URA budget as considered by the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee unanimously passed a motion to recommend the URA budget without changes, and the board is asked to take action on this item tonight.
Okay, do we have any, anybody signed up?
Apparently not.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if there's any questions. Seeing none, does any councillor object to taking action tonight? Seeing none, you want to put the motion up?
I move to adopt Resolution 1067 of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene adopting the budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It passes. All right, next up is number six, public hearing in action, adopting a supplemental budget. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is to provide council- This public hearing is to provide counsel, excuse me, the Urban Renewal Agency Board an opportunity to hear from the public on the FY13 Urban Renewal Agency supplemental budget. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenue and authorizes other anticipated changes in legal appropriations, and the board is asked to take action on this item tonight.
Thank you. And we have one person signed up, and I bet if I asked you who you thought it was, you'd have guessed.
John Borowski. Come on down. You're the next contestant. John Borowski, Ward Three. Thank you, Mayor, counsel, and thank you for the clarity. I mean, the question that I asked, Sue gave a lot of the answers. You know, where's the $7 million come from? They're all right, but as a member of the public, there you go. This supplemental budget, I just want to, again, shine a little bit of light. You're giving, recognizing funds from the sale of property in the Urban Renewal Agency. You authorized that on October 31st, I think, Counselor Pryor, where it's wearing a Star Trek uniform. But anyways, the proposal was to sell the piece of property to Northwest Community Credit Union, which is a worthy addition to our downtown. I just want to, you know, at that, when you put it forward, there were some things represented, and this is, actually has come to pass. It was represented at that meeting that the SDC charges would be $200,000. In this supplemental budget, they're being appropriated at $350,000. And at that meeting, there wasn't an exact number for moving the AgriPac building that ended up costing $180,000. So, the realization, and it was said it would be sold for $15 per square foot was the purchase price and the cost. If you back out these costs, the, and that was at the bottom end of the scale of what price is going for, for commercial downtown, you guys sold it for $8.51 a square foot. I think if an RFP had been put out for shovel-ready dirt of 1.89 acres at $8.51 a foot, you may have gotten a few bites. I just, like I said, this is a supplemental budget. What was put before you on October 31st was a nice proposal. This is actually, when the rubber hits the road, this is what you got. You got $700,000. The Urban Renewal Agency is paying 350 and paid to move the AgriPac building. We are getting a nice building. We are getting a, an addition to downtown that meets a lot of, checks a lot of the boxes in what we're looking for. So, I'm not saying that it's a bad project. It's just, again, shine the light on what's going on, and no surprises. You know, that was kind of a surprise. You know, they said, "Please keep this quiet," when they were in the negotiations. Well, I know why they kept it quiet, because they're paying $8.51 a square. A lot of people might build on that for $8. So, in the future, I implore you to kind of look at these land sales and hope that you're doing the best for the City of Eugene. Thanks.
Close the public hearing. Ask if there are any questions, counsel? Seeing none, Counselor Taylor.
Yes, what happens if we vote against this?
You're going to have to weigh in on that.
If the supplemental budget isn't passed this evening, is that what you're asking? Then, yeah, please. Then the money doesn't get transferred, I think, is my simple answer, but please.
Paul Gubanikem, Central Services Department. So, there is two parts to the supplemental budget, the $180,000 for the AgriPac building movement and other work that was done on it, and the $350,000 for the SDCs. Most of the AgriPac building funding has been spent, so we would have our Oregon local budget law violation because of the exceeding illegal appropriation authority. As far as the SDCs, I guess nothing would happen if that part is not approved, but the staff would have to come back to you at a later point, probably in the next fiscal year, to ask for additional appropriation authority for that particular item. Thanks.
I think this was a mistake and something we did in haste that we should have had more time to think about.
So, does anybody have any objection to taking action tonight? Okay, all those in favor, please...
I got to put the motion out.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I don't know what we're voting on.
I move to adopt Resolution 1068, adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013.
Second.
Now, moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two. It passes. Thank you. We're done with the business of the evening.